I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Councilmember Stacy Green.
Present.
Councilmember Kim Green.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Paul Hall.
Here.
Sue Callejon.
Here.
Want me to make a motion to suspend?
Please.
I so move.
A second. It's time for the non-agenda public comment. The agenda is a lawful tool used by the city council to conduct the public's business. Subject to government code 54954.3, members of the public have the opportunity to address the legislative body on any item of interest that is within the council's jurisdiction and not listed on the agenda. Comments relating to items on this agenda will be taken at the time the item is heard. We have a public comment.
Hi, Jim Striegel, 2601 North Old Stage Road. Several years ago, I approached the city, and in particular Ron Stock, about considering putting up a recharge station, a supercharger, for Tesla automobiles. And this was before they had awarded the contract to Mount Shasta. The city didn't respond quickly. He said he had a letter on his desk, never went out. Mount Shasta got the contract. Right now Tesla is going through a huge upgrade. They're expecting to build half a million cars a year, starting next year. They're gonna need to at least triple their charging facilities up here in the mountainside for all the cars going up and down I-5. I just thought I'd drop the bug in you guys' ear now, if you could somehow send a letter to Tesla or tell them you're interested in making some space available for a supercharger station. The Tesla owners are well-heeled, lots of money, and anytime we can get a Tesla owner to stop for an hour or two in town, spend money, eat, drink, and shop, well worth it. There's gonna be a lot of these cars going up and down I-5. There already are. There's gonna be ten times as many in the next couple of years. Just an idea. You guys can see, I don't know where you take this idea, present it to Ron, or making a whatever. But it's coming, they're wrapping up their production really fast in the Bay Area. It's an American product, and it'd be a feather in our cap to get a charging station maybe across the street from the High Lo, something like that.
Thank you Jimmy. Question. Now, this station, are they, is that just for Tesla?
Yes.
Now, in what are we, in the future, what do you think's gonna happen in the future as far as the electric car, as far as stations?
The stations offer free charging for Tesla S and X model owners, and the new, lower-priced Model 3, the owners will be paying for charging unless they can buy a certain package that gives them free charging all the time. It's the only place they can recharge on the trip from Medford to Reading, and they don't have room in Mount Shasta at the current location for another 12 or 16 power hookups. So this would be the good time to go before they have really ramped up the production to express our interest in being another stop. It'll bring tourists with money to the restaurants and the shops, and it'll be another step into the future for Weed.
And in that, now it's Tesla, but what do you project, or what's projected as far as the future goes, as far as these stations, these recharge?
Well, right now they've got about six charging slots up in Mount Shasta. Tesla's been making fifteen to twenty thousand cars per quarter. They're planning on, by next year, ramping it up with the new Model 3 to five hundred thousand cars a year. They've already got four hundred thousand paid reservations for the Model 3. It's gonna, they're gonna be selling a ton of these.
My question is that there's gonna be other makers with electric cars?
Yes.
What are, does any, do we have any information on what to do about, not what to do, but looking in the future, and it's not just gonna be Tesla?
Right.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we're not supposed to go in discussion back and forth, but just to say, it is an area that's gonna be imploding, and we can connect and get more information, but we appreciate what he has, but we can follow through because we were addressed.
What I think I'd do is I've asked Jimmy to come back if he can find some information, unless you want to take that on.
Well, we have it as a city already.
Okay.
We have, so we can.
Okay.
It's a great suggestion.
Okay. Thanks.
Mark Juarez, 265 Main Street in Weed. I just, I actually wanted to introduce Zach. We've just hired him to take over the project manager and operations of all the buildings. I'm not taking a very good job of it just simply because I'm running another business as well. So I was looking for the right person, and we're really grateful, and I'd like him to tell a little bit about himself. He's come from New Orleans, and has had some experiences in rehabbing buildings after the New Orleans experience. So I think he's good.
Hey, everybody. Zach Kushner, now 265 Main Street as well. Very happy to be here. So yeah, I'm gonna be taking over project management. I know that there's been some stalls and some expectations that haven't been lived up to, and those didn't come from me. I'm looking all of you in the eye, and letting you know that you're gonna see some major changes very quickly. So I'm really looking forward to getting to know all of you and the community, and ways that we can work together and get these buildings up and moving. My background is in community engagement, with a major part of it being in the arts, both music and live events. I run festivals, and I'm a creative consultant for a lot of other companies as well. So I see the opportunity to not only get these buildings up and going, but get them to be a part of the community in a very quick way. And again, I'm still assessing the situations and figuring out the plans, but my idea is that within the next two weeks, you're going to see some curb appeal things taking place and getting that out of the way, which is probably a priority for everybody, and then quickly seeing the activation of the inside of the buildings. Again, what that is, is what we're still kind of figuring out, and I really want to get to know everyone here and what the needs of the community are, and how I can help serve those needs.
Are you a contractor or an engineer?
Neither.
Okay.
Neither. So yeah, I'm a, again, I'm a creative consultant, so I did, I ran a nonprofit organization after Katrina in New Orleans called Open House Music, and basically what we were doing was sort of pre-Airbnb, but it was sort of an Airbnb meant for artists, musicians, and people that worked in the service industry, chefs, bartenders, cooks, things like that, who we considered the backbone of New Orleans, and we wanted to bring people from the outside who did that into New Orleans, give them a free place to stay, and then inject them into the community in some way. So we did partnerships with local music venues and art museums, and we gave them gigs, and they got to stay at the place for free, and in exchange, they gave back to the community. So they did free music classes or music lessons, they went to a church, or they went to a school and worked with the elementary schools, middle schools, high schools. A lot of these models, I would love to, there are ways to apply it to what's going on here, and I would love to explore that with the town.
Mr. Vice Mayor, may I ask a question? We're supposed to ask that in this session, actually.
Not back and forth.
But I'll ask the question to him. Have you met with Paul, our planner, right?
He is who suggested I came today. We met with him today.
So are you aware of the statuses of the buildings, the various ones where they are? Have you been brought to speak with that?
I'm in the midst of being. Most of it, yes, I have been brought up to, but I'm still completing that as of right now.
Okay. That's the only question. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, that's encouraging. Thank you. That's just what we, Main Street, we need you. Welcome.
Well, it's nice to be here. Thanks.
First, I'd like to, I think I have to ask for a motion. We have a late, something that came in late. We need to, proclamation expressing support for the Ciscu Startup Weekend occurring on October 6th and 7th, 2017. It'll be in Mount Shasta, but we've been asked to support this.
Support in what way?
In just a proclamation, whereas Google Startup Weekend and entrepreneurial events are occurring all over the world and have helped create successful new businesses. Basically what it is, is to get new businesses involved, assisting one another.
Is that the one that they were going to do before?
It's, I, it just came in, I don't really know. I know Tim Sterns asked this, the mayor of Mount Shasta asked us to support it.
So if the council's gonna vote to authorize the mayor to sign it, you should have a motion to be added to the agenda, and then you can discuss it and go down and stuff.
I so move for a motion to be added to the agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's on the agenda. Maybe we can get some copies made for everybody? Can we do that? Council member announcements. Stacy.
None sir.
Nothing. Kim?
I have none because I missed our last meeting, so sue me.
Yeah, and we've been working, we've been working in our group. We thought we would have something on tonight's agenda. It's not there, so it will be there.
Or cannabis.
A cannabis committee.
Okay, okay, okay.
May I ask a question? There was a piece of newspaper stating, oh, October 1st, there's a hearing regarding people being able to apply for cannabis cultivation as groups in the city of Weed.
Didn't it say Monday, 18th?
I thought it was October 1st.
Monday.
18th.
No, that's not new, right? That's ongoing.
That's our, that's our medical?
Yes.
That's a dispenser.
That's our newspaper.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a dispenser.
It's something at 10 o'clock, is that right?
Nine o'clock. Begins at nine o'clock, but that'll be discussed when it comes up on.
Later, I'm sorry. I'm sure that was it. Thank you.
Sue, anything?
No.
Okay. I have, I attended yesterday, matter of fact, I attended a meeting for the homeless coalition, and it was pretty, it was engaging. It's, the philosophy that they're going with is, that we're going to go with is a hand up, not a hand out. But right now, we're trying to figure out how we're going, where the priorities are gonna be. Obviously, the number one priority would be finding families that are homeless. And we did also discuss trying to establish a forum that we could pick up before people become homeless. There's warnings, there's signs, and those are the, you know, the quick fixes, and those are the things that we want to try to look at, but that's developing, and I think it's something that I'm hoping that we can get more people from Weed involved in it, concerned. It's something that we're all going to, we're facing right now, and I don't see it getting any better real soon, but there has to be a solution out there for these people, and we need to, we're trying to establish something. Also, being reporting, I'm, I tend to, I hear a lot of, from our community, a lot of what's wrong with our community, you know? The things that are going wrong. And I'm, I really think that there's a lot of good things happening in Weed. And I really think that one of the, you know, the grants that come through that our staff has worked and developed, and the council has supported them, but the work that's being done here after this fire is quite phenomenal. I mean, I think we had something like $27 million come in after the fire, and the grants right here with assisting up to $7.8 million of grants. And these grants aren't, and I hope the public can realize that these grants just don't appear, it's that you, oh, I want it, I get it. There's a lot of work, a lot of hoops that have to be jumped through, and it takes a professional group of people to do this. And it wasn't very long ago, we depended totally on Great Northern to do this for us. And we're, these grants are being handled within our staff here, and I commend Moran and his staff, and I think it's time that we start looking at what is happening here. We've got economic development, we, you know, the pavers on Main Street were the first thing, and the lights, you know? In 2008, there wasn't, there was no lights on Main Street. That's a big improvement. No lights, and we accepted that. It was pitch black. The Newton Residential Area is starting to move. Dollar General came in. Grocery outlet came in, Starbucks come in. These things don't just happen, folks. These things just don't happen, but they're happening in Weed. Why? Why, is it just luck? I don't, I think not. I think that we have something, something going on here. We're working together, and things are starting to, you know, to pop. We have Heritage Park, and I'm getting, starting a lot of comments on Heritage Parks, what addition it is, our new water tanks. These are infrastructure, the new, the infrastructure in Inja Valley. The water tanks, we have a new street sweeper. We've got a, we've purchased a new backhoe. We have a new fire truck coming. We have a new community center, getting ready to happen. Holiday Express, we've got, as far as social, we have, with our sales tax, we have a senior bus now that takes people to and from shopping, takes them to doctor's appointments, takes them, and we also support a meal one day a week. And we have a library that the city now supports, a very fine library.
Our flags on Main Street?
Flags on Main Street. There's, we can go on, and things are happening here, but I really believe it's time that we start highlighting what is good, and not about what's wrong. I mean, it's just so easy, I can, you know, but, and it's a mindset. And I hope that, I'm, I'm, I just think it's time to put some, you know, some light to the positive. And I might commend the staff, things are happening here, and it's been just a joy working with the council, watching these things happen. You know, little things, the crossing over here, for 30 years, people complained about knocking, getting their front end knocked out. We have, that, that's not there anymore. We took care of that. These are, these are things that are small things, but they add up, and it's really, the people, it's interesting that we're getting a lot of new people now. Their schools are, we have higher enrollment. Next week, we're gonna, next month, we'll have something very, very positive to say about the school system, what's happening in Weed. So, you know, I'm a rah-rah guy, but take me serious. These are all facts. These are facts. So, you know, staff, good job. We've got, our finance director, Kelly, he gets very little credit for screwing, screwing with these new companies that come in. With Craig, with after the fire, I mean, my God, what your crew did. The chief, we're, good things are happening here, so I'm off my soapbox, let's get back to business. Okay. Don't do that, please. Okay. Ceremonial. Long-term recovery group status report.
Add this to your good things.
Yes, and, whoa, excuse me. Long-term recovery group.
Happy anniversary.
Yes.
How about that?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, council members, I'm with you, Bob. High optimism. You know, when I got involved more with this community after the Bowles fire, I've watched it all, and I'm proud to be a part of it, as our committee is, and really proud of your staff and your community for stepping up as they have. Kind of like emotional, huh? As funding for the staffing, did I say? I'm Audra Balick, the Public Information Officer for the Weed Long-Term Recovery Group. As funding for staffing for the Long-Term Recovery Group, case management, volunteer coordinator, and construction coordinator winds down to close this fall, there is less to report. Most casework is focused now on Habitat for Humanity families, with logistics such as setting up their power and water accounts, finalizing insurance coverage, and communicating with Ciscu Habitat for Humanity about the status of the title paperwork and payments. So that is more leaning now towards Habitat for Humanity work, so it won't be staffed by our Long-Term Recovery Group funds. Several households not involved with the Ciscu Habitat for Humanity have asked for volunteer help, and they'll still be referred to the volunteer coordinator through the end of the next month. The last delivery of sandy soil is planned to be completed by September 17th, later this week, or early next. Case management is coordinating the documentation and working with the Resources Committee members to complete this service to those Bowles fire survivors who had registered to receive it. By the end of September, remaining volunteer groups will be coordinated and working through Habitat for Humanity on their designated projects. The Weed Presbyterian Church is having two celebration events and invites the public to attend. Tomorrow, Friday, September 15th, from 3:00 to 5:00, they're hosting those who worked on the fire and who worked to rebuild, plus city and county officials. And on Sunday, this coming Sunday, a worship service starting at 10:30 a.m. is followed by a tour of the facility and a dinner. For the fiscal report, the Weed Long-Term Recovery Group and the Board of Directors of Shasta Regional Community Foundation have recommended the dispersment of the remaining funds in the Shasta Regional Community Foundation's Community Disaster Relief Fund for the Bowles Fire, which is a total of $72,512.55, be granted to the Weed Recreation and Parks District towards the rebuild of the Weed Community Center. There will be a check presentation following this report with Carrie Curancy and Amanda Hutchings from the Community Foundation who are here this evening. And an itemized list of the dispersments from that particular fund has been submitted to you, and there's also some copies in the back for anyone, and it's been submitted to the press, too. That's a wrap-up of all of the dispersments from that fund. Board of Directors of United Way of Northern California, they meet next on September 27th to address the balance of their Bowles Fire Relief Fund, so I don't have a report on their remaining amounts. Our last received was that their balance remaining was $130,608.2, but you'll get, I imagine you will get a direct report from United Way after their next board meeting. And just as a recap, for the Shasta Regional Community Disaster Relief Fund, it raised $641,356.97, and will disburse $650,338.55 plus the, I just messed that up, but anyway, it's in the report. Correct. I was trying to do the math in my head, and that's not a good idea at the end of a long day. Anyway, it's clear, it's good. Upcoming meetings, we have our last public meeting scheduled for Tuesday, October 10th, at 2:00 p.m. at the Great Northern Office's community room. And that's pretty much the wrap-up of the Long-Term Recovery Group volunteer activities and staffing. And then we do owe you a report, which we are gonna work on and wait till we have it in exactly the right format that we want to present to you. The contact information remains through the end of September. The case manager, Andrea Herr, can be reached at 530-408-0012. And the construction coordinator, Pat Olson, 925-1426. Volunteer coordinator Brenda Dukie at 408-0023. The Weed Recovers tab on the city's website is still active. We will put the remaining reports up on there. Calendar and updates will still be posted at weed recovers.org. That site will remain up. And the email address is winding down now, there's not regular correspondence coming from that, but we still receive it, it's just not, you won't expect an immediate response from the volunteers who are slowly moving on to other projects. So thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
I don't have any questions. I have a lot of gratitude. I mean, really, I mean, the work behind the scenes, the, I see we also have the Shasta Regional, and they're, they're, we'll talk about them, but the Long-Term Recovery Group, you know, take it back to your folks.
Well, actually, you can take it right here.
Is everybody here?
Our chairperson, Nicole Torsey, is here. She's been, she's led the Long-Term Recovery Group.
Thank you, thank you very much. Working behind the scenes, there was a lot of, there was a lot of stressful work, and a lot of decisions that had to be made that were, they weren't easy, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
The training that we went to shortly after the fire through UMCOR, which is United Methodist Committee on Relief.
Committee on Relief.
Finally, after three years. Yeah. They said, you're probably looking at four years to recovery, don't, and we were, we're at three. And everything's not done, but will everything be done? I mean, is this, this is the new normal. And they were, they recommend us to, all over the place, back to Audra, we went back to the Midwest and spoke about it at.
We've shared our experiences quite a bit. Your city manager and myself and Bonnie Kubowitz will be at the American Planners Conference, is that the name of it, Keith?
American Planning Association.
Planning Association.
California chapter.
Next week in Sacramento to talk about resiliency planning and responses in disasters. So we're experts. No, I mean, it's nice to be able to share with other communities what worked, and really, the bottom line is what worked in this small community is the resilience of this community. And as Nicole told us at the very beginning, setting up a structure, going slow so we can go fast later. That's exactly what happened, so.
Very well done.
I can introduce Carrie for your next item, or you can, Carrie Curancy.
Tremendous bunch of volunteers, two of them here, tremendous bunch of people, really, really.
Organized.
Yeah, nothing goes unspoken. Great bunch of people, as yourself. Carrie, I'm.
Thank you again. Yes.
Well, thank you. Hello, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. I'm Carrie Curancy, the CEO of the Community Foundation, and I'm very honored to be here tonight. It's hard to believe that it's been three years already, and yet it seems like yesterday at the same time. As Audra said, she gave a lot of the stats I was gonna talk about, but just about $650,000 was donated specifically for this community from local community members and community members far and wide who reached out to help, and that says a lot about who you all are. 100% of these donations have come back to the city of Weed for the recovery efforts and the resiliency, and we at the Community Foundation are so honored to help you and to help serve the city of Weed to make these efforts happen. So thank you very much for letting us help you and be a part of the wonderful spirit here. So today, we would like to make a check presentation with our remaining balance of $72,512.55 to the Weed Recreation and Parks District for their wonderful community center to cap off what has been a challenging but prosperous event for the city of Weed. So I'd like to welcome up Mike Rodriguez.
Come on up, Mike.
Oh wow.
District manager, is that your title?
Yes, administrator, whatever.
The Mike.
Yes.
Mike the man. To accept the check presentation, and I would appreciate it if we could get council members and anyone involved in the Long-Term Recovery Group for a picture, please. May we approach up here?
Sure.
Do you have your camera, Audra? Oh, okay. You're good.
We got.
You want to stand right here?
Yeah, we can just stand right here.
Come on over here. Sit right here.
Well, no, these are right here.
Oh, you're one of them.
She's one of them. And both sides, yes.
Way to go.
Should we go down, too?
Well, we can probably stand right here.
Hey, you can stand right here.
I don't know.
Where are they going?
Stand right behind.
You want us?
If not, I have to stand around.
You guys can come in more. Come over, come in more in the back, go up to your left, some more center.
Good job, Stace. Good job, Stace.
Yeah, can you guys center?
Okay.
Wait.
Nicole, you're not gonna hide in back.
Okay, can I have you lift up that side of the check just a bit more? I can see all of you. I can see all faces, ready? One, two, three. I'm gonna take a few pictures, so keep the smile going, please. One, two, three. Lots of good work to celebrate. One, two, three. Okay, now like a cheers, right? Yay, we're here! One, two, three. Great. Thank you all. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you. Seventy-two thousand dollars.
Thank you very much.
Very nice.
Can I make a comment real quick?
Yes.
I just want to thank the foundation, I'm half the Recreation District, and board members and staff, just for their continued support. They've been a great partner with us over the years, and now we have one big project to complete, and we're looking forward to getting it done. So, again, thanks for the City of Weed also. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Michael. Bob, the proclamation, should we do it now?
Does everybody have a chance? Counsel, read this. You want to go ahead and read that, first?
No. I mean, I can't. But is this, does it, is this the same thing that they were going to do, like, back in June, and they postponed it? Does anybody know the answer to that?
Not this. I think you were talking about the tourism.
No, no. This was a Siskiess Startup thing. I think it is. I think it just got postponed.
The Google, the Google name wasn't there, then, something else.
I don't know. Go ahead. I do have just one question.
So, I'll go ahead and read it, then, if that's what we need to do, and then we'll take a vote on it. Is that it? Proclamation expressing support for the Siskiess Startup Weekend occurring on October sixth, seventh, two thousand seventeen, whereas Google Startup Weekend Entrepreneurial Events are occurring all over the world and have helped create successful new enterprises. And whereas Siskiess Startup Weekend is a fifty-four hour event that allows anyone to turn an idea into reality. The event starts on Friday evening when participants pitch ID, ideas. They then form teams around the top ideas and spend the rest of the weekend validating and building their idea, aided by local mentors. On Sunday evening, teams come together and pitch their new launched company to a panel of judges. And whereas Startup Weekend provides participants the opportunity to be immersed in the ideal environment for startup magic to happen, surrounded by smart, passionate people with the best tools and approaches at, at participants' disposal. Participants will take giant leaps towards creating a business, becoming a founder, and connecting with the right people and resources. And participants are likely to leave the Siskiess Startup Weekend knowing the next steps they need to take on their road to success. And whereas, the City of Weed encourages the creation of new start, startup companies in Siskiess County, and the Siskiess Startup Weekend is designed to help people gain knowledge, skills, confidence to start companies in a fifty-four hour weekend intensive, and adult and student participants will have access to valuable startup resources to launch new businesses in Siskiess County. And whereas, the City of Weed wishes to express support for the Siskiess Startup Week, Weekend Event and to encourage participation by would-be entrepreneurs in the same. Now, therefore, I, Bob Hall, Mayor Pro Tem of Weed, hereby proclaim the city's support for the Siskiess Startup Weekend Event taking place on October sixth, seventh, and eighth, two thousand seventeen, at the Mount Shasta High School, and encourages other agencies and cities to likewise support the efforts to make the October two thousand seventeen Startup Weekend a success for all participants and aspiring entrepreneurs. Any discussion, or?
I, I do. I would like to suggest, if we can, to give it to, copy of the flyer, because it says, you're going to bring an idea into the judges, what happens there, we don't know. But I'm suggesting that maybe this should go to the Weed Elementary School principal and the Weed High School, and maybe the COS as a, as a, as a information.
I think also, I'd like, Kelly, if we have some businesses that are interested in starting up in, in Weed right now, I know that Gupis Market has possibilities, we, we may pass that on to anybody thinking about starting a business. I think this would be a perfect assist. So, if you can get ahold of anybody that you, that you've been in contact, which I think you have more contact than any of us. So, going to get a motion to accept this?
I so moved.
Hold on a second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Keith, one of the leaders in this?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do we get the, 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 excuse me?
We opened it after the staff.
That's what I was wondering, I didn't know the format. Can I just say something real quick, or is it not, did it already happen?
Or regarding what?
Well, you, usually you have, you hear from the staff, and then you open the public hearing.
Right.
Right. Is that kind of how, what you guys used to do?
We're talking about this item?
No, no item. I'm not talking about...
She missed that part.
That was a public comment, that was the beginning of the meeting.
It's a different, you did it different order than usual, that's all.
We're, we're on the public hearing section where there's two items that we're going to talk about. Are you going to talk about either of those two items that are there?
Well, I will, but that's not what I'm going to be talking about now. I just, I thought it was the regular time where...
It's not. It's zoning ordinance tests amendments, and the second was the sewer replacement project. That's the public hearing section, unless the vice mayor wants to do something different.
The public time is over, done.
Bob, can we allow it? Go ahead, Holly, you've got three minutes.
You can do whatever you want, sir.
All right. Thank you for honoring me that. Just speaking of entrepreneur, I filed a fictitious business name for Friends of Jaca, no, Hands-on Friends of Jekalen. I don't even remember the whole title. Hands-on Friends of Jekalen Bowls Fire Recovery Plus Education. And I'm, I'm a joint venture with, with at least one of my neighbors, possibly two, who didn't have insurance at the time of the fire, and we're trying our darndest to perhaps get some of this United Way fund to help us build. But also, a very sweet thing that, part of this, Jekalen is, you know, our girl from Weed High School last year, and her name of her senior project was Hands-on, and she wanted to be a builder, and so, so I'm trying to be entrepreneur. I'll be working with Jedi a little bit and trying to do it. I, you know, I have it in me, but I'm going to try to do it, but not for money. It's not an official nonprofit, but for service. And lean for love and justice and all those good things and neighbor. And then, sorry, tonight, sorry, CHP officers using the Great Northern Services Room, two of them, one from Mount Shasta, one from Waireka, per Jekalen's memory, you know, she, her eighteenth birthday would be the, the day after the Bowls Fire, and the six, the sixteenth. And, but they, it's their Start Smart Driving thing for CHP officer, and there's kids and parents in there right now as we speak, it's tonight, so I, I don't know, my daughter was too busy working, but there's other kids there with their parents, so I'm just glad for that. So, we can hopefully do more using that room and other things, so thank you. That's the education aspect of love, anyway. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Holly.
All right. Thank you, Pro Tem Mayor Bob Hall. This, this is returning to the council after about, probably, if you remember right, you directed the Planning Commission earlier in the year to look into perhaps clarifying or dealing with some certain input you had from the public concerning fence materials that were used, and perhaps look at some solutions for modifications, perhaps, or just what to do in general with certain fence materials that are now kind of coming into play, but, but aren't necessarily traditional, and, you know, some, some people like them, some people don't. Well, anyway, what, what we've done at the Planning Commission was have, started in April two thousand seventeen, well, first, let me just go through the introduction. Essentially, the Planning Commission is recommending amending the zoning code, specifically the sections concerning fences, walls, and hedges, basically to make for clear ordinance as far as what is permitted and what is prohibited, and things that fall in the gray area, they, they recommend having a special use permit for, with, so that people can make their pitch to the Planning Commission regarding alternate, alternative fence material and, and adopt findings that support the fence, you know, the findings are in the ordinance about, you know, public safety, reflection, you know, and certain things about standing out or being, you know, offensive to the neighborhood, or, you know, your basic nuisance kind of, kind of things. So, but, so in April, we met, and basically, staff, staff realized that the definition of fences had a little bit too much detail in it. It actually had standard, design standards in the definition. That's not a good place to necessarily have stuff like that. It's often overlooked by staff, and it could cause lots of confusion. So, one of the proposals, section one of this ordinance, is to clean that up and just eliminate the specificity of the definition of fence. So, the, the main part of the ordinance that is being proposed would recommend, you know, keeping the fence permit process mainly administrative and clarifying that so the building inspector or staff does not have to use any discretion when approving a fence, a basic fence. Now, if, if a property owner feels that they have a better, a good idea for a design and maybe some alternative fence materials, they would come to the Planning Commission. So, essentially, in April, we figured out that that was the direction they wanted to go. They didn't really want to exclude homeowners from being creative, and also wanted to make sure that when a fence is approved, that it's supported by certain findings. So, in, with that, we came back in June with some approaches that other cities would be using, and also some staff suggestions, and we, you know, talked about the current regulation, how it's basically not really necessarily clear about what, you know, what is allowed, what's prohibited. And also, there's really no, no criteria to base an administrative decision on. So, they figured that we, that was when we decided that we'd really want to recommend some amendments to the zoning code to the city council. So, and staff came back in July with draft amendments to the, to a hearing in July. So, the Planning Commission considered some additional issues at this hearing. One commissioner felt that perhaps there should be no prohibited materials on the list, and made certain suggestions for edits. A discussion ensued, and, and in the end, the modifications were made to eliminate some redundancy in the draft, but the prohibited list was deemed to be useful. So, we have a prohibited list and a, and a permitted list, so. After discussion, the Planning Commission felt that with the redundancies removed and the language modified, the prohibited list would remain, and they recommended to forward the draft amendments to city council as modified at that hearing. Now, the reason I went through this kind of play-by-play is because in the government code, when we do amendments to zoning codes, it, we're supposed to have in the report details of who, you know, what the reasoning is for the amendment, and also, anything that the Planning Commission considered that maybe made it into the ordinance or not. That way, if you guys want to change something, if it was something that the Planning Commission had already considered, it doesn't have to go back to the Planning Commission, it can be as modified in here. But if it's something that you guys want to change completely, that's, that has not been considered up to now, then it has to go back to the Planning Commission and then back to you guys. But essentially, the ordinance is, as it attached, and we've made the section one change to the definition, clean that up a bit. We've changed the order a little bit about permits required up front now, whereas before that was kind of buried down in, in the ordinance. And then we have a design standard section from sixteen point four oh, oh two oh A through F, and then there's a whole section about what's allowed. We have a very detailed list of types of fence materials that the building inspector could, or the staff can administratively approve, and also a list of things that we just pretty much don't, are recommending not to include, so that way staff can say, "No, not, the council and the Planning Commission have not accepted that as allowed material." But then, the, the part that they really worked on and recommended the most is to allow alternative fence materials by special use permit. And section eighteen point four oh, oh five oh gives the, it says basically that the use of materials not listed in this chapter as being either allowable or prohibited may be approved by the Planning Commission with special use permits, permit, and must be supported by the following findings, and the findings are A through H, no, A through J. And basically, it's kind of like the safeguards, and if they, we could support those findings that way that the Planning Commission can approve a nicely designed alternative fence. Now, another thing that I wanted to add is that during the first parts, we brought in sections of, picked a lot of photograph examples of nicely done fences that are made out of, like, say corrugated metal or other materials, and we've also looked at things that weren't so nice. And so, that's when they really began discussing the fact that, you know, just because it's not a traditional fence material doesn't mean it can't look good, and that's what brought on the special permit. So, I just want to let, let you know. And so, that's what they're recommending here. If you have any questions, I hope I can answer them. I was, I was there at every hearing and helped them along with this, so, or, it was a couple workshops and a hearing, and so, that's what we're proposing. This is the first reading, by title only.
I do have just one question. The three or four instances that were, oh, sorry, the three or four, four fences that were in question, has that been addressed in the document and with the actual property owners?
Well, actually, the, the fencing material that some of, at least one of them, is still conceptually okay with the use, with you get a special use permit, but perhaps maybe some of the reflectivity, you know, like how things reflect off it. Yeah, we, what we're, to answer your question, it's, it's hard to answer it directly because we didn't really address specific materials that were in question. We clarified what materials were permitted, and that's, that makes that list bigger, but also took, to address, let's say that those people still insisted, well, first of all, those, those fences were permitted based on the last ordinance. So, you know, in the future, if someone came with some of those fence materials, they would probably either, like, take their application elsewhere, or perhaps go for the one with the special use. And then the approval of those would have to be supported by these findings.
There were questions from the community, and also the property managers came to us. So, we need to address those ones that came to us, some type of way, either it's corrected here, or a next step or something, but we just can't leave it.
Well...
And so, my question is targeted toward those people that came to us as city council to say that, "Well, we heard there's a concern, but I want to do this or that." So, I, I believe that we do have to address those.
Well, let's just say that the future is what we're addressing. What was permitted in the past, we really can't necessarily address, except through the nuisance abatement. If, if everybody still feels that those fences create a nuisance, then you'd have to do some sort of, but, but as far as taking and naming out specific fences in this ordinance, no, we're not doing that. We're, we're going to, in the future, address those ideas.
We have a responsibility to address the people that came to us because it wasn't right, and we, whatever, for whatever reason. So, from the police perspective, the, the officers, or our city staff, we, we have to address those folks some type of way.
Right.
Am I, am I missing something?
No. Well, I, I, I think what you, what you said, though, is that if the, if the permit was, was applied for in the seat, that's pretty much a done deal.
Yes, yes. Those, those fences were applied for, and they were, the permits were granted.
Well, one wasn't, I know that for sure, but, but regardless, as long as the property was communicated with, and they have this message, then that's great. That wasn't said here, and, and I never presume.
Right.
So, so if that, those three or four instances, they were taking care of the property owners okay with it, then we're okay as a whole. I was asking that question.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know where you were coming from, because I, I was under the assumption that everybody knew that, that yes, those fences were permitted, so now we're kind of going to come up with some policy for the future, so when that happens again, they have to go through a different process, or just a clearer process, let's put it that way.
And in the meantime, just so you know, so you weren't here, the residents of the community came in and said, "We don't like this, it's reflecting, it's doing this, it's doing that."
Mm-hmm.
doing that. And, and we had a lot of discussion on it. So, just as long, just as long as we communicate to the folks what the outcome is, regardless of the outcome, I just wanted to make sure that was done. It needs to be done if it hasn't been.
This ordinance doesn't address the existing fences. That's a separate and more problematic question because people have certain rights in what they've always done. I'm not saying that's off the table. I'm just saying this doesn't address that yet.
Well, well, it does because this was done because of those discussions.
It was. That's a prompt of the.
So, it is connected.
This ordinance doesn't address existing fences. That's not.
And those, those ones that were questioned were permitted.
Right. But there was question, okay. But it does, it does.
The one thing I did question is, I know we had, I believe all of those people that came said that weren't finished. And I'm wondering if they have finished. I'm aware of one that hasn't done anything different since the time they were here. Because I look at that fence. That's the only thing I'm wondering about.
And I was asked that before.
And I know you're still working on yours.
And I was asked that before the public hearing, the folks come, come up and say some of that. So, I hope we can address it as a, as a, as the organization that's leading for the city. So, I, I, I hope we have some answers to that. But we'll see if they come up and say something.
Somebody need to open a hearing? Have we, we both opened a hearing?
Open a public hearing.
So, we need.
Make a motion.
Okay. I do have, if you look at one sixteen point four zero point zero two zero nine, I believe in section B and section C, there is a problem. It states, in B, or on a lot, the rear line or which abuts the sideline or an adjoining lot shall exceed four feet height in measure.
Probably shall, no.
Um.
Oh, oh two oh.
Zero two zero, sixteen forty, zero two zero.
Well, well, okay, that's probably a typo because this is the old, this is the start, part of the ordinance that we didn't change.
Okay.
So, there's probably supposed to be a not.
I hope so.
Yeah.
And then above that, it says, or on a lot, I think it's supposed to say near the rear line.
On a lot, near.
On the third line.
Yeah, probably.
I think we're missing that.
I'm hoping.
A lot, the line of which, no, it makes sense as it.
Or on a lot, the rear line.
Maybe it's supposed to be of instead of or.
I don't know. I'm pretty sure not is supposed to be in between shell and exceed.
Yeah. That's what it is, is of, of which, yeah. Or, or on a lot, yeah.
I found a couple of titles sitting here as well.
On section C, did you find, is, is it supposed to be a pine or a poinsettia? Okay.
We pine tall.
Maybe, maybe, pine talling inside the fence.
There's always one on the other side of my fence.
All right. That was all I got.
So, we have any, I think we pretty much were proponents. We have any opponent?
Thank you. Holly answered, two eleven Pine Street, three, three, four East Lake Street, Weed. To be clear about the grandfather clause, because we're kind of concerned, like for you, the question was, well, okay, if I'm not finished, once this ordinance becomes done, even though I have the permit, am I not allowed to use the prohibited material? And if material is prohibited and we have it up, then is it like pot that all of a sudden people were growing and then they can't, it's prohibited, so they have to tear it out of their gardens? Do I have to tear it down? I mean, so there's kind of like a, a gray concern there.
I haven't addressed that question yet. There is no grandfather clause in here. You'll notice.
I noticed that very well. It would be nice to address.
And they try to get some upgrade in the, the concepts first. And then the more difficult question is the one you've just raised.
Yeah, thank you. That is the key. And, and then also, if we're going through the trouble of, of adjusting this fence and hedge ordinance, I would really recommend that you guys address, consider addressing, um, there's a lot of fences in Weed that are a heck of a lot uglier than what people think mine is when it's, with, when I wasn't done yet. And they're falling down old, there are materials that are traditional fence materials that are broken, blown down by the wind. And so, I don't mean to be punitive towards anybody because I know it's hard for people with fences, especially when they blow down every year. But, you know, we might want to look at that. And also, I have barbed wire wreaths. And is, so that's prohibited, so I have to go to the whole planning commission and pause it. Well, that would be okay. And then, so there's other, you know, I don't have barbed wire like eh, but I think that since we're in a time of war, we might want barbed wire at some point. You know, I mean, in case hell, all hell breaks loose. But that's another issue. But, you know, can we have decoration? And then also, Paul told me that when I asked him about this two-foot retaining wall that I did in the middle of my yard, because eventually I'm going to get fill there and I just needed some, so I didn't want it just straight. He said, oh, no, you don't need a permit for it because it's in the middle of your yard and it's not affecting anybody's thing. And I said, yeah, it's also going to be buried under the ground. But, so at what level does a wall or a structure become, he's, you know, he has a discretion, but if we're going to be doing this, can we make it clear to the homeowner so they're not like in, they did it and then they say, oh, no, you have to have a permit. You have an illegal fence, you know? So, or whatever. And so, I'm not saying how to word that or how to address it, but it seems to be reasonable with our property rights, like common sense, that we don't have a communist nation where every little thing is like, you know, some bureaucrat saying, oh, it's not according to my opinion. And I'm the guy in power, so off with your head, not in those exact words, you know? So.
Holly, is there something we can do for you?
Yes. I wanted you to consider, thank you very much, taking the ordinance and looking at a more broader picture. One, yes, including the grandfather clause for the Bowles fire. Another issue that we have is the elevation restoration of the Bowles fire. I'm having a problem with that right now. And then the other one is making it for the older fences too, or just the fences in general. If you're going to take the time to doctor up the fence amendment, why not do it, do it instead of just targeting my fence and my neighbor's fence who has corrugated tin cloaked and other stuff that you guys have there. That's all. Does that make sense? Does it? Could you want to have a discussion on that? I don't know.
Do we have any questions on?
I don't know.
Thank you very much. Take it under advisement, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
We're.
Did we have those sides?
Nobody else had anything.
So, this is.
This is for the first reading, correct?
Um.
For ordinance?
Yes.
So, it's.
Council will consider adoption of ordinance number four, four, zero, two, zero, one, seven. An ordinance of city weed, commending the weed municipal code as it regulates fences, hedges and walls. So, you want to introduce that?
So, is this for first time?
Yes. First reading.
So, would be, I move that the reading in full of the body of ordinance number four, four, zero, dash, two, zero, one, seven, be waived and sent ordinance being introduced to the first reading by title only.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I move introduction of ordinance number four, four, zero, dash, two, zero, one, seven.
Thank you very much.
Of weed. Um. Municipal code, any fence, hedges and walls?
Amending chapter eighteen point oh eight.
The purpose.
On the actual ordinance.
Section one eight zero eight?
Yes.
Two, one, zero, one, eight, point, two, four, two, one, zero, of the weed municipal code.
I second, sorry. I second it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
You're welcome.
Number two, sewer replacement project. Our staff going to, walk us through that? Bob, is that you?
I read this.
I'll try and do that. I'm already losing some of my voice, so hopefully you can hear me. On August tenth, the council approved the submission of a grant for a.
To start, I thank you, Martin, for speaking into the mic. And I want to remind the council that the mics closer to them, people, there are a lot of people at home that are, that are attempting to listen. And the same thing for Bob, if you can remember to do that. I think it would all be better off if we heed to that. Thank you. Go ahead, Mark.
Again, the, on August tenth, the council approved the submission of a grant for the sewer project, sewer replacement project. And however, the public comment period has not yet been completed on the amendment for this grant project. The amendment is due to a spill that occurred in the Bowles Creek area this last winter. And so, they amended the project for that. Asking the council at this point to allow public comment and then have discussion and hopefully approve the amendment in compliance with CEQA.
Thank you, Martin. So, we have any, any question regarding this?
No. I move, mayor, that we hold the public hearing per the report from the committee and the persons, based on where we're at.
Do we have any, any, you move that and be second?
I second it, if possible.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. So, do we have any, anybody concerned about this mitigated negative declaration? No? Okay.
Not, then we can close the public hearing.
Public hearing, can I get a motion to close the hearing?
I so move.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Good. Okay. So, we need the.
Can I do the resolution?
Approve the addendum to mitigated negative declaration as recommended?
All right. I can, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion that we, let's see, approve the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration as recommended in full of the body of the resolution number, which is.
Turn the page.
Twenty dash twenty oh one seven. And be waived, said the resolution being introduced and adopted by title only.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
I've been moved, adoption of the resolution, and I'll read the title. Twenty dash twenty one, twenty one seven. Resolution for the city of weed, for the city council of the city of weed, adopting addendum to the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration for the sewer replacement project.
I'll second it.
I'm a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Regular agenda. A, community development department, planning and public safety divisions, medical cannabis dispensary applications. Council, council will consider amending current ordinance to modify the application review process. Council will consider second reading for adoption of ordinance number four, three, nine, dash, two, zero, one, seven. An ordinance of the city council of the city of weed, revising and restating section eight point three zero of the weed municipal code regarding the regulation of, of location and operations of medical cannabis dispensaries. Do we have any report from staff or?
Public comment?
Public comment? Well, I was going to ask, yeah, public comment.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll go ahead and start. Um, let's see. All right. Well, Bob, I just want to say earlier.
Name and address, please.
Shane Phillips, weed, where am I, five forty eight Florence. You guys have all known me probably since I was new, could know you. I know you guys all have. Anyway, I'd like to say earlier, you started off by saying, there's a lot of people saying what's wrong with weed. I also believe there's nothing wrong with weed. I think you guys did an amazing job after the fire and continue to do an amazing job with all that. I think we do need to support our locals a little more and be more local and listen to our locals as we do our meetings, our ad hoc meetings, and as we work on this ordinance that we're working on as a team, pretty much all of us together. We have Sue, we have Kim on it. It's about all there is. But it seems like we come to a consensus as a group and we'll come to the council meeting and then there's a whole nother agenda that we didn't talk about as a group. And we've already pretty well shut every local out of this by saying they have to have a year of experience of either manager or owning a store, which there is no locals in our community who have that experience. And I would really hope it goes to a local and a local that wants to build our community and be here for a long time and not just line their pockets or all about money. The locals are looking to build the town, build a future for, for all this. I have so much more to say. I'm going to try to keep it short. Also, I see here where we're talking about possibly moving this and changing the ordinance. And I believe the ordinance is pretty solid. Is that on the agenda for moving?
Okay. I asked that question. I had this the other night, on Monday night. And so, I did go and talk to Martin. Ron's out of town. This, what's on tonight's agenda is adding, stop me if I, if I wrong. It's adding wordage to it to meet federal standards.
Okay, if that's all we're doing is just for, and it has nothing to do with moving because.
Yeah, that's, that's the next item. It's the language change. This, this is just the second reading of the same, same one from last meeting.
Okay, never mind. I'll say that same thing in a minute.
Yeah.
I mean, one pertains to two, two pertains to one. I mean, it's all pretty well.
But we have to, we have to.
But I have to talk about it in that order.
Okay.
There hasn't been any change. This is just the second reading.
Okay. So, then pertaining with the ordinance, I think the ordinance is pretty solid as it is. I believe there's been many, many changes that have been made here, made there, wherever. I've had to go about it the same way as everybody else, align myself with the right people, make sure I'm not with the wrong people because I am a local. Everybody knows what I do, where I do, what I do, how I do it. And I believe that should be a big part of it. And if we're gonna move things around, also, I don't know if the community center might be moved, might not be. That could be a future thing. I've had to really work hard to find a building and move around all that and have not had the support behind me on that. And I just ask that we do it all the way around and do it fair like that. And we continue doing that because it really doesn't seem like that. I mean, it seems like it's, it's headed the other way. Yeah. And I just really don't feel like we should be relocating anymore, anything. I mean, things were relocated, not by you guys, not in any way, but things have been relocated as successful business. And I'd like to see nothing else change because of this. I think everything should stay the same on Main Street. Nothing should have to move due to a cannabis dispensary. As in the community center or community resource center, whatever, whatever that's called. I don't believe that should.
The midpoint.
Yep. We've taken care of it.
It's done.
Oh, it's already taken care of?
Yeah.
So, they, they're staying?
So, we're good.
Yeah, we're good.
Oh, okay.
So, can I address the concerns? So, so as we said, this is, in order to adopt an ordinance, we have to have two readings. So, this is our second reading of the ordinance. Then the next thing on our agenda will be to add that language we need for the federal language that we need. But nothing has changed.
Okay. It just says though, right here, it says regarding the regulation of location and operations. So, I just feel maybe that.
Yeah, no, it's the same as it, as we presented it.
Appreciate, appreciate your time.
No, I questioned it too.
Yeah.
Evening. Elizabeth Tabor, Mount Shasta. Okay, so, I bleached this head. I read ordinance four thirty six dash two zero one seven and I can't find a four thirty nine two zero one seven. Our ordinance with the city is ordinance four thirty six dash two zero seven. Is this just an upside down nine or am I?
Is it a, a typo?
That's what I'm asking. Because I'm like, wait a minute, I'm reading two different things.
I'd have to have my minute, I don't have my agenda from last month.
It, it's not updated.
I'm sorry. Okay. So, what, so are we ordinance four thirty six dash two, two zero one seven. An ordinance of the city of weed council revising the weed municipal code to provide for the regulation of location dispensaries, medical cannabis. It's titled four thirty six two zero one seven online. So, I don't, okay. So, I was just wondering if that's an upside down or if there's an amendment to. amendment to that with four thirty-nine and I'm not seeing it.
Sounds like a typo in the number to us.
One of them's wrong.
Yeah, that's what I was just curious.
I don't know if it's that one or this one.
So that's what I was missing when we were, when you had discussed revisions, locating. Could you just briefly bring me up to date on what that discussion briefly was? Whatever changes you're making that you're rereading, is that distances, location within the city?
There are no changes. This is just the second reading as it applies to operation and location.
Okay, and that's still from this part of Maine to this part of Maine?
Yes.
Everything's, that's the same.
And the concern was what? The resource center?
Yeah, there's, it's-
It's not, it's not a daycare.
Yeah, or it's a six hundred, yeah. Because we had to go through that, they went through that on the other reading.
We did that on our cannabis committee.
Okay.
Not really, Martin brought it up and it was never addressed.
Yeah, because we decided we didn't need to address it.
Okay.
Excuse me, let's-
Mr. Vice Mayor, we can't have people speaking from the audience. They have to be at the podium so we can hear each response.
This is crossed out.
Whatever you have, make sure we can hear it, because it might be important. I'm sure it's important.
So I apologize with the upcoming application and dates, I was looking for a four three nine and I couldn't find it. And I'm like, what am I missing? So what a better place to come and ask all of you.
Okay. I'm thinking that the nine is the right number.
Supposed to be a six.
Oh.
You think? Because the ordinance online, on the city online is four thirty-six.
From what we, we're seeing on, he's on there, it's nine. And they took it from last, so I'm thinking that the six is the wrong one, because the next one we just did was forty.
That's right now on your site. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah. So the zoning ordinance was number forty. But we will have that, we will make sure.
So then four forty-one two zero one seven, I know that's the next item, but is that I just want to make sure I'm reading correctly, that's all. I apologize. Four forty-one's right, okay.
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying, I think.
Who do you find this, Stacy?
I'm on the website, the actual document.
Okay.
But we need to-
Can we do the second reading?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion to?
I'll do it.
Well, before that, a directive, can, Mr. Vice Mayor, we have the, the current document updated as quick, I'm not gonna have the time, forty-eight hours, but as quickly as it can, so we know we have document that's on the city server that's current for people to see. Can we make sure we have that, a directive for staff?
I don't have no problem with it, there are you.
Yeah.
Do you understand what you asked?
I'm sorry, I'm just, you want to say I-
Go ahead.
He just wants, he just wants the information updated on the website to make sure it's the right number.
We, we will find out which ordinance number, four three six or four three nine is appropriate. Okay, so four three nine is appropriate, so we'll change the website.
And may I suggest to have an edit date on there?
Sure.
Then people can go by a date.
Sure.
Not just in the title, but on the actual document.
Excuse me, I need to restate, the application stating that you guys are taking them Monday morning on nine AM, so will it be fixed by Monday morning, nine AM, or?
It'll be fixed tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, my name's Dr. Patrick Riley. I own two forty-one Main Street here in Weed. And the only question I had about the ordinance was chapter and section eight three zero zero three zero, definition A. It states that only a nonprofit entity then is defined as an alternative medical clinic. So does that mean that, that for-profit corporations are not included or are ineligible for this application? It seems like a very, very obscure, I've never seen a city have that, nonprofit only. So I'm just curious if that was also a mistake or if that was intentional.
It's intentional.
Okay.
You can still talk about it.
Okay, well, I would probably think that most companies that would have, or have experience, or have actually already established or incorporated, likely would not have a nonprofit and would then have to now refile with the state. Also, I would include the provisions in nonprofit, especially the federal, that will actually conflict with this, most, most particularly those that are for goodwill. I can imagine a lengthy discussion about whether medical cannabis is for goodwill in terms of a nonprofit status eligibility, meaning that you could actually eventually have the state disqualify something simply because they'd be filing for the nonprofit for this, for this exact application. So I would just recommend that in the second reading that that be at least noted. And then also, lastly, although I'm from out of town, I've also, I did purchase Weed just this year, because I think it is an up and coming city. And I believe Mr. Hall forgot Starbucks. Starbucks is coming, so there we go.
He said it.
All right, thank you.
Are we okay with the nonprofit? Are you?
We didn't think that it was gonna be a problem.
Let me ask our city attorney, he mentioned some legal directives that may come in play because of the nonprofit, not-for-profit. Are we good as, as we have it, or is something we need to look at?
Well, if, if you were going to apply for five oh one C three status, that might be an issue, but that doesn't, that's not required that you do that. It really says that you can't be a for-profit entity. Five oh one C three status, the IRS recognizes charitable and public benefit corporations, that's not necessary. And I agree that that could be problematic under federal law, but we're not asking for that.
Just a, a general question to the committee, what, what, do other cities have that?
I believe so. I think that that's what we modeled ours off of.
As long as it's not Calaveras, that's all.
I can't argue for it against it. It was in the recommendation from the committee and that's how it got in.
Okay.
We have another comment. Please, help us.
I apologize, since this has come up, so if I could, can I put my two cents in?
Please.
Once the Compassionate Use Act and everything passed, because of obviously federal government, state government, back even from ninety-six, when the first dispensaries and storefronts happened, you had to file as a nonprofit. We are not allowed to file any type of tax returns and things in the manner of a regular retail business or company. So with the new merging of AUMA and now Mal Kursa merging together, we are still allowed to license as a nonprofit all the way to the end of eighteen. Then, at the end of eighteen, beginning nineteen, they're still discussing legislation of having nonprofits then having to reapply and possibly at that time change to a L.L. limited liability company. And that is because of the federal government. That is because it's still, the scheduling's up and down. In fact, he's a physician, we do have goodwill. Actually, our cancer patients do not pay for their medications. That is actually donated and paid forward from other patients. So it's a very generous compassionate act. So that is the way that the state and the government requires us to file. There's no other way right now. Next year, when things change on January one, other entities and in the cannabis industry would then file as a limited liability company or a company. That's where the new, all the new taxation comes into place. But actually storefronts, dispensaries are continued for an additional year as a nonprofit status. Just to clarify, sorry.
Thank you for your clarification. All right.
All right.
All right.
Consider, you got it?
Yeah.
I move that the reading in full of the body of ordinance number four thirty-nine dash two zero one seven be waived and said ordinance being read and adopted by title only.
Second it.
Have a second. All in favor? Aye, opposed?
I move adoption of ordinance number four three nine dash two zero one seven, an ordinance of the city of Weed revising and restating section eight point three zero of the Weed Municipal Code regarding the regulation of location and operations of medical cannabis dispensaries.
Second it.
You have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carry. Item B, ordinance of the city council, the city council of the city of Weed relating to the permitting and licensing cannabis-related businesses. Council would consider first reading of ordinance number four four one dash two zero one seven, allowing cannabis-related businesses to acquire a license to operate within the city limits.
Mayor, this is a two-part solution to a problem, you might say. One is we have to make sure that our municipal code is, is consistent. And we've had some things in the past, such as you can only get a business license if your, if your business doesn't violate federal law, which we have to deal with, because we're now gonna do that. And the other part B of the solution is what I call the no pigs on Main Street stuff that we find some of our, in our older parts of the municipal code. We had one that prohibited certain kinds of activities, activities without a special permit, such as a circus, a sideshow, a dance hall, skating rink, bowling alley, amusement or recreation parlor, whatever that is, and so, so forth. I think it used to say dog and pony show as well in here someplace. So I thought this is an opportunity to update that as well and, and get away from the, the hazards that are, that were at least recognized back in nineteen sixty-two as, as being the downfall of the city, such as skating rinks. So this, this ordinance does that. It allows us to proceed with our, with our medical marijuana ordinance and be compatible with the rest of the code. And as I said, it also updates some old provisions.
May I have public comment?
Again, just to be clear, is this pertaining to moving from Main Street or not?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't see that.
So our ordinance said that we would never adopt something that violated federal law, but we're going to, so we're changing that ordinance.
That's part of the ordinance.
Yes.
Good job.
That's it.
Seven, eight words, but I took a hundred and didn't accomplish.
Okay, first reading?
Any other questions? All right.
Is there any place, is location is, is there any place else? Because I didn't see that.
No, not right now. All right. I move that the reading in full of the body of ordinance number four four one dash two zero one seven be waived and said ordinance being introduced for first reading by title only.
Second that.
Have a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry.
Okay, I move introduction of ordinance number four four one dash two zero one seven, an ordinance of the Weed, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Weed relating to the permitting and licensing of cannabis-related businesses.
Second it.
You have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carry. Item C, Public Works Department, Sewer Division, council would consider introduction and adoption of resolution authorizing the filing of a financial assistance application. Do you have?
I do.
Thank you.
Again, on August tenth, when council authorized the submission for the grant, they did that by minute order. And the state requires or require, or hopes to or requests that you actually do that by resolution. So this is a resolution to provide the authority to apply for that grant, rather than the minute order that you already did.
Does everybody understand that?
I do, but I have a question. This is not for the whole city of Weed because of-
Please use your mic, please.
Can you, can you guys hear me?
That's not the TV.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Apologize to folks at home, thanks for watching. Is this for our entire city or just for North Weed, Vista? I believe it's not for the entire city, because I see downtown Weed and North Weed.
What?
This project is, is also gonna be, it's got White Avenue included on it. We got a sewer line right here by the post office. It's gonna be behind the Berean Church. It's, it's scattered around quite a bit. There is, there is no sewer work being done in Vista, on Vista. The only, the only hangup was the same project we brought to you earlier with the diagrams on it, and we got approval. I submitted the paperwork with a minute order and they kicked it back and said I had to have resolution. That's why this-
So my next question, so the pictures we have here, I see East Lincoln, North Davis, Parks Way, all the ones that are red identified in the maps, that's where the project is, is enhanced for, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, does everyone know that?
I think we've got South Weed, elementary school down to the post, post office and Main Street, correct?
Yep. And, and over behind Rays, that's part of the CEQA that came up with behind Rays and where we had that problem over there, that's gonna be included in here.
Mr. Vice, I ask that because we're aware that our entire city needs to be fixed. But I just want to make sure that we, that people know and that we know what areas are being addressed. So there's no question.
These are our, our lines that are in the most need right now. And that's why we're jumping around everywhere instead of just doing one location.
Thanks, Craig. Thank you, Stacy.
Is this, is this our first reading?
We're gonna make a, we're asking for a resolution, that's all we need.
Oh, okay. Resolution is one, so we need this, this one?
Yes.
For resolution? I move that the reading in full of the body of resolution number two one dash two zero one seven be waived, said resolution being introduced and adopted by title only.
I'll second it.
You have a second. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Carry.
I move adoption of resolution number two one dash two zero one seven, a resolution of the city council of the city of Weed authorizing the submission of a grant application.
I second it.
You have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carry. Thank you. Look at us. Consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions on this consent agenda?
No, Mr. Vice Mayor, not myself.
Can I get a motion?
I still move that it be approved, consent agenda be approved as, as listed.
I'll second it.
You have a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, staff reports.
Yeah, just quickly for the fire department, we've flown the, the two positions for fire chief and assistant chief. They close October thirty-first, so we'll see what we get for candidates there. I'll be, I'll be getting our committee to put together for, start the interview and selection process. Also, our new engine's coming along nicely. I would expect for us to have it around mid-October. So as far as fires last month, well, we ran about, the total was seventy-two calls, I think, last month, and we had four fires. All of them were small, so that was a good thing. The bad thing is all of them were transient related, so that's kind of the sad part there.
May I ask a question? How, how long are you still here for?
Well, I'm trying to get finished as quickly as possible, but I would think probably somewhere in December.
Your contract says to end of the year, right?
Well, not, it says nine hundred and sixty hours. I can work nine sixty in twelve months and I probably, I don't know, around three hundred and twenty or something, so about a third of the way.
I'm keeping track, thank you, sir.
But then it all starts over on the first of January, so we could keep him another year.
If we do the new contract, yeah.
If he applies.
Kelly?
Yeah, we're still working with the developers and on the housing thing we had mentioned before, the affordable housing, it's not government subsidized, it's duplex and fourplex that is still moving, still moving forward. This is a good mic, it picks it up quite a ways. I speak loud anyway. Anyway, we, we're still working with that, just talked to them today. That will stimulate some other activities in the same area with, with another group of people, it appears. But anyway, things are going well and like I mentioned, Starbucks, it's gonna be open pretty darn quick. I forget what he said the date was on that. I forget what he said the date was on that.
September fifteenth.
Say it please loud.
That's tomorrow.
September fifteenth?
We better get in line right now.
They're trying, they're trying to, they're... Because I know they had to change the dates because of the big shots with Starbucks are going to be up here. But I guess Wednesday, from five to seven, there's going to be free drinks. And I asked him what kind of drinks?
Decaf at nine.
So, I'm sorry, what are the dates again? There was two different conversations, what are the dates that we know or can look at or the public is looking for? I have another question after that. But what are the dates that we, as a city, know?
Wednesday, I know, he said the free drinks from five to seven. That came from our building inspector.
So that's probably a soft opening.
I know they're really close, within just a couple days. You know, I think they were shooting for tomorrow, but I don't think they're going to make that, but it's close, so.
It's amazing.
It did go fast.
If there's ribbon cutting, I'd like to be a part of it, I'm just...
That's usually a chamber of commerce.
Right, I think it should be both. So, okay, Wednesday the twenty-seventh, right? Okay.
She said the nineteenth, and I like her, she knows.
Because that's what they're calling services set up and they're all using the nineteenth. Those services that take the trash and water and sewer, that's all getting and starting off the nineteenth.
There we go.
So that makes sense that the eighteenth would be like a soft opening.
Can we just find out so we know?
He's going to be out there seven, about seven tomorrow morning to do some, help them with some inspections, move along, but he will know for sure.
Maybe he can send us an email.
Yeah, send an email, we don't know as city officials when things happen, as I know. We should know when people ask me, is open, I like to give an answer. So we can just find out what date it is, just communicate it by email.
They should let us know.
So, I saw you write that down, thank you sir.
I have nothing to report.
Ron asked me to let you know that the reimbursement check for nuisance abatement was in the city, so I was able to close escrow.
Good.
Oh, did it close escrow?
That's how we got the money.
Ah, nice, that's right.
They dispersed the money back, reimbursed us, they had to close that escrow.
Yep, good, cool.
And lastly, I think most of you have heard that we have our K-9 in service now. He's on patrol, he's gone through his training for protection, search and for narcotics enforcement. So we're looking forward to being able to have him out here. I was going to try and get him to the meeting tonight, but we'll shoot for next meeting.
He's the new guy, so he has to work weekends.
What's, and his name?
Drax, D-R-A-X, Drax.
He is vocal, he is a vocal K-9.
I have a question, Mr. ... When we did the Silva's abatement, we also had the other nuisance abatement up on South Weed.
Right.
And they have cleaned.
So what?
But I have not seen any activity for several weeks, do you know anything?
The Veterans Administration hired a person to come in and clean to the point that he did. And I think he got tired. It was pretty bad.
Yeah.
But he still has stuff there, and so we'll keep on top of him.
And it's mostly all outside that he's done, nothing inside yet, so, but it's still under the Veterans Administration?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes, it is. We also probably, I think it's next week, they will be working on the house on Crestmore for cleanup as well. We've received bid and hired Tim Louie to come in and clean that up.
Okay, thank you.
So there's a low meeting coming up in October, I need to know if you're attending and your meal choices, because I'm going to be closing my October port.
Have a mic.
I need your Bob, Tim, I believe, and Bob, just Bob.
Yeah. Yeah, you're coming?
What's the date, do we know?
October eighteen.
That's the date right before the council meeting.
Yeah.
I know it is, it always is.
Yeah.
That's me.
You're right.
It's eleventh.
Eleventh. So I'm understanding.
Okay.
Bob?
It's the eleventh, yeah.
No, and do you have a report?
No, nothing.
Mr., I do have a question. I know Facebook, social media, people are just jamming up about Panda Express because they know I love it. But there's going out that we're getting it in South Weed, Lowe's, can you have any updates we can say? And they said today, yesterday Wendy's, I'm like, oh my gosh, I haven't heard any of this. Can you speak to any of those? Our finance person or our vice mayor?
We get the word out, we get the word out, we go through the EDC also. And there's, you know, people come, you know, these companies come, and have known us to us many times, they observe what's going on. And we find out and we pursue them naturally. Yeah, I agree, I'd like to see Panda Express.
And Wendy's.
You still haven't given the answer. I don't put precedents to social media, but when they ask, I'm like, ooh, I want to tell them, just, no, stop saying it every month, every week. If it comes.
Maybe Panda Express will see it.
And throw out these suggestions also with, you know, it's public knowledge and love. And we're trying to encourage them to lead our way when it comes to things like that.
That's a good business answer.
Sue?
Oh, I'd like to, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second it.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry. Thank you all for coming. Council, thanks for getting us through this thing without our leaders, it was pretty, we did it.
Where did that location come from? You guys, where will we...
What?
Where did that location, because I was, because people...
What location, what are you talking about?
The question about the ordinance, they said it was location, but it was, it was a typo we put together?
No, no, it's just the second reading, it said that before, they keep thinking that we're moving it because the ordinance says about the location, so they...
But don't you guys talk about the meaning?
Yeah, but he thinks, but he thinks that we talk about it there and then by the time it gets here, we've changed it to something else.
Okay, oh, she wants the book back.
And there was a big question about, because it can't be so many people from a daycare, and so the resource center right on Main Street, but the resource center is not a daycare.
Right, but how's you that come?
Yes, but they're not being taken care of when they're there.
Sure they are.
No, they're not.
Well, they're getting public services.
Maybe, but nobody's, their parents are with them, they're not dropping them off for daycare.
It's not a daycare.
We can't talk this through, can we?
Sure.
I'm concerned about that. I hope he does it. And then he, and then they start working on his home place.
Have her turn the microphones off.
Hi, I recently started as a stringer for the paper, I was uncovering the paper, I was wondering... They did it and then they say, oh no, you have to have a permit, you have an illegal fence, you know, so, or whatever. And so, I'm not saying how to word that or how to address it, but it seems to be reasonable with our property rights, like common sense, that we don't have a communist nation where every little thing is like, you know, some bureaucrat saying, oh, it's not according to my opinion and I'm the guy in power, so off with your head, not in those exact words, you know, so...
Holly, is there something we can do for you?
Yes, I wanted you to consider, thank you very much, taking the ordinance and looking at a more broader picture. One, yes, including the grandfather clause for the Bowles Fire. Another issue that we have is the elevation restoration at the Bowles Fire, I'm having a problem with that right now. And then the other one is making it for the older fences too, or just the fences in general. If you're going to take the time to doctor up the fence amendment, why not do it, do it, instead of just targeting my fence and my neighbor's fence who has corrugated tin cloaked and other stuff that you guys have there, that's all. Doesn't that make sense, does it? Could you want to have a discussion on that, I don't know.
Anybody have any questions on...
I mean... Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Back to business.
Thank you.
Do we have those sides?
Nobody else has had anything.
For ordinance?
Yes.
So it's...
Council will consider adoption of ordinance number four-four-zero-two-zero-one-seven, an ordinance of city weed, amending the weed municipal code as it regulates fences, hedges and walls. So you want to introduce that?
So is this for a first time?
Mm-hmm.
First reading.
So it would be, I move that the reading in full of the body of ordinance number four-four-zero-two-zero-one-seven be waived and said ordinance being introduced, the first reading by title only.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I move introduction of ordinance number four-four-zero-two-zero-one-seven, an ordinance of...
Thank you very much.
Here.
Of weed... Municipal code, the fence, hedges and walls?
Amending chapter eighteen point oh-eight.
The purpose.
In the...
On the actual ordinance.
Yes.
Two-one-zero-one-eight-point-two-four-two-one-zero of the weed municipal code.
I second it. I second it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You're welcome.
Number two. Sewer replacement project. Is that staff going to... Walk us through that, Bob, is that you?
By Craig. I'll try and do that, I'm already losing some of my voice, so hopefully you can hear me. On August tenth, the council approved the submission of a grant for a...
To start, I thank you Martin for speaking into the mic, and I want to remind the council that their mics closer to them, people, there are a lot of people at home that are attempting to listen. And the same thing for Bob, if you can remember to do that, I think it would all be better off if we heed to that. Thank you, go ahead Martin.
Again, on August tenth, the council approved the submission of a grant for the sewer project, sewer replacement project. And however, the public comment period has not yet been completed on the amendment for this grant project. The amendment is due to a spill that occurred in the Bowles Creek area this last winter. And so they amended the project for that. Asking the council at this point to allow public comment and then have discussion and hopefully approve the amendment in compliance with SEQA.
Thank you Martin. So we have any questions regarding this?
No, I move, Mayor, that we hold the public hearing per the report from the committee and the persons, based on where we're at.
Do we have any, you move that and be second? I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So do we have anybody concerned about this? Mitigated negative declaration? No? Okay.
Not that we can close the public hearing.
Public hearing, can I get a motion to close the hearing?
I so move.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Good. Okay. So we need the... Approve the addendum to mitigated negative declaration as recommended?
All right. I can, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion that we, let's see. Approve the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration as recommended in full of the body of the resolution number, which is...
I don't have a number.
Twenty-two-zero-one-seven. And be waived, said the resolution being introduced and adopted by title only.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
I've been moved adoption of the resolution, and I'll read the title this time, twenty-two-one-seven. Resolution for the city of Weed, for the city council of the city of Weed, adopting addendum to the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration for the sewer replacement project.
I'll second it.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Regular agenda. A, Community Development Department, Planning and Public Safety Divisions, Medical Cannabis Dispensary Applications. Council will consider amending current ordinance to modify the application review process. Council will consider second reading for adoption of ordinance number four-three-nine-two-zero-one-seven, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Weed, revising and restating section eight-point-three-zero of the weed municipal code regarding the regulation of location and operations of medical cannabis dispensaries. Do we have any report from staff or...
Public comment?
Public comment? Well, I was going to ask, yeah, public comment.
I'll go ahead and start.
Don't everybody rush.
Um, let's see. All right. Well, Bob, I just want to say earlier...
Name and address, please.
Shane Phillips, Weed, where am I, five forty-eight Florence, you guys have all known me probably since I was... Knew, could know you. I know you guys all have. Anyway, I'd like to say earlier, you started off by saying, there's a lot of people saying what's wrong with weed. I also believe there's nothing wrong with weed. I think you guys did an amazing job after the fire and continue to do an amazing job with all that. I think we do need to support our locals a little more and be more local and listen to our locals as we do our meetings, our ad hoc meetings, and as we work on this ordinance that we're working on as a team. It's pretty much all of us together. We have Sue, we have Kim on it, that's about all there is. But it seems like we come to a consensus as a group, and we'll come to the council meeting, and then there's a whole nother agenda that we didn't talk about as a group. And we've already pretty well shut every local out of this by saying they have to have a year of experience of either manager or owning a store, which there is no locals in our community who have that experience. And I would really hope it goes to a local and a local that wants to build our community and be here for a long time and not just line their pockets or all about money. The locals are looking to build the town, build a future for all this. I have so much more to say, I'm going to try to keep it short. Also, I see here where we're talking about possibly moving this and changing the ordinance, and I believe the ordinance is pretty solid. Is that on the agenda for moving?
Okay, I asked that question, I had this the other night, on Monday night, and so I did go and talk to Martin, Ron's out of town. This, what's on tonight's agenda is adding, stop me if I'm wrong, it's adding wordage to it to meet federal standards.
Okay, if that's all we're doing is just for, and it has nothing to do with moving, because...
Yeah, that's the next item, is the language change.
Oh, okay.
This is just the second reading of the same, same one from last meeting.
Okay, never mind, I'll say that same thing in a minute.
I mean, one pertains to two, two pertains to one, I mean, it's all pretty well...
But we have to, we have to...
But I have to talk about it in that order.
Okay.
There hasn't been any change, this is just the second reading.
Okay, so then pertaining with the ordinance, I think the ordinance is pretty solid as it is. I believe there's been many, many changes that have been made here, made there, wherever. I've had to go about it the same way as everybody else, align myself with the right people, make sure I'm not with the wrong people, because I am a local, everybody knows what I do, where I do, what I do, how I do it. And I believe that should be a big part of it. And if we're gonna move things around also, I don't know if the community center might be moved, might not be, that could be a future thing. I've had to really work hard to find a building and move around all that and have not had the support behind me on that. And I just ask that we do it all the way around and do it fair like that, and... And we continue doing that because, um, it really doesn't seem like that. I mean, it seems like it's, it's headed the other way. Yeah. And I just really don't feel like we should be relocating anymore, uh, anything. I mean, things were relocated not by you guys, not in any way, but things have been relocated as successful business and I'd like to see nothing else changed because of this. I think everything should stay the same on Main Street. Nothing should have to move due to a cannabis dispensary. As in the community center or community resource center, whatever. Whatever that's called, I don't believe that should.
The mute point.
Yep, we've taken care of it.
It's done.
Oh, it's already taken care of?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they, they're staying?
So we're good.
Yeah, we're good.
So can I address the concerns? So, so as we said, this is, in order to adopt an ordinance, we have to have two readings. So this is our second reading of the ordinance.
Okay.
Then the next thing on our agenda will be to add that language we need for the federal language that we need, but nothing has changed.
Okay, it just says though, right here, it says regarding the regulation of location and operations, so I just feel maybe that was changed.
Yeah, no, it's the same as it, as we presented it.
Appreciate, appreciate your time.
No, I questioned it too.
Evening. Elizabeth Tabor, Mount Shasta. Okay, so I bleached this head. Um, I read ordinance four, thirty-six, dash, two, zero, one, seven, and I can't find a four, thirty-nine, two, zero, one, seven. Our ordinance with the city is ordinance four, thirty-six, dash, two, zero, seven. Is this just an upside down nine? Or am I?
Is it a typo?
That's what I'm asking, 'cause I'm like, wait a minute, I'm reading two different things.
I'd have to have my minute, I don't have my agenda from last month.
Yeah.
It, it's not updated.
I'm sorry, okay, so what, so are we ordinance four, thirty-six, dash, two, two, zero, one, seven, an ordinance of the city of weed council revising the weed municipal code to provide for the regulation of location dispensaries medical cannabis. It's titled four, thirty-six, two, zero, one, seven, online. So I don't, okay, so I was just wondering if that's an upside down or if there's an amendment to that with four, thirty-nine, and I'm not seeing it.
Sounds like a typo in the number to us.
One of them's wrong.
Yeah, that's what I was just curious.
I don't know if it's that one or this one.
So that's what I was missing when we were, when you had discussed revisions locating, um, could you just briefly bring me up to date on what that discussion briefly was? You, whatever changes you're making that you're rereading, is that distances, location within the city?
No.
There are no changes. This is just the second reading as it applies to operation and location.
Okay, and that's still from this part of Maine to this part of Maine? And?
Everything's, that's the same.
And the concern was what? The resource center?
Yeah, there's, it's.
It's not, it's not a daycare.
Yeah, or it's a six hundred, yeah.
Nope.
'Cause we had to go through that, uh, they went through that on the other reading.
We did that on our cannabis committee.
Okay.
Not really, Martin brought it up and it was never addressed.
Yeah, 'cause we decided we didn't need to address it.
Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, let's.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we can't have people speaking from the audience, they have to be at the podium so we can hear each response.
Let's cross that.
Whatever you have, make sure we can hear it, 'cause it might be important. I'm sure it's important.
So I apologize with the upcoming, um, um, application and dates, uh, I was looking for a four, three, nine, and I couldn't find it. And I'm like, what am I missing? So what a better place to come and ask all of you.
Okay. I'm thinking that the nine is the right.
Supposed to be a six.
Oh.
You think? 'Cause the ordinance online, on the city online is four, thirty-six.
From what we, we're seeing on, he's on there, it's nine. And they took it from last, so I'm thinking that the six is the wrong one because the next one we just did was forty.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah. So the zoning ordinance was number forty. But we will have that, we, we will make sure.
So then four, forty-one, two, zero, one, seven, I know that's the next item, but is that also? I just wanna make sure I'm reading correctly, that's all. I apologize. Four, forty-one's right, okay.
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying. I think.
Who do you fund this, Stacy?
I'm, I'm on the website, the actual document.
Okay.
But we need to.
Can we do the second reading?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion to?
I'll do it.
Well, before that, a directive, Kim, Mr. Vice Mayor, we have the, the current document updated as quick, I'm not gonna give it time, forty-eight hours, but as quickly as it can so we know we have document that's on the city server that's current for people to see. Can we make sure we have that, a directive for staff?
I have no problem with it, are you?
Yeah.
Do you understand what you asked?
He just wants, he just wants the information updated on the website to make sure it's the right number.
We, we will find out which ordinance number four, three, six, or four, three, nine is appropriate. Okay, so four, three, nine is appropriate. So we'll change the website.
And may I suggest to have an edit date on there?
Sure.
Then people can go by a date.
Sure.
Not just in the title, but on the actual document.
Excuse me, um, I need to restate, uh, the application stating that you guys are taking the Monday morning on nine AM, so will it be fixed by Monday morning, nine AM, or?
It'll be fixed tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, uh, my name is Dr. Patrick Riley. Um, I own two, forty-one, Main Street, uh, here in Weed. And the only question I had about the ordinance was, um, chapter and section, uh, eight, three, zero, zero, three, zero, definition A. It states that only a nonprofit entity then is defined as an alternative medical clinic. So does that mean that, that for-profit corporations, um, are not included or are ineligible for this application? It seems like a very, very obscure, I've never seen a city have that, um, nonprofit only, um, so I'm just curious, um, if that was also a mistake or if that was intentional.
It's intentional.
Okay.
You can still talk about it.
Okay, um, well, I would probably think that most companies that would have, um, uh, or have experience, um, or have actually already established or incorporated, likely would not have a nonprofit and would then have to now refile, um, with the state. Also, I would include the provisions in nonprofit, um, especially the federal, that will actually conflict with this, most, most particularly, um, uh, those that are for goodwill. Um, I can imagine a lengthy discussion about whether medical cannabis is for goodwill in terms of a nonprofit, um, status, uh, eligibility, meaning that you could actually eventually have the state disqualify something simply because they'd be filing for the nonprofit for this, um, uh, for this exact application. So I would just, um, uh, recommend that in the second reading, that that be, um, uh, at least noted. Um, and then also, lastly, um, although I'm from out of town, um, I've also, I did purchase weed just this year because I think it is, um, an up and coming city. Uh, and I believe, um, Mr. Hall forgot Starbucks. Starbucks is coming, so there we go. All right, thank you.
Are we okay with the nonprofit, are you?
Yeah, we, we didn't think that it was gonna be a problem.
We asked our city attorney, he, he ran to some legal directives that may come in play because of the nonprofit, not-for-profit. Are we good as, as we have it, or it's something we need to look at?
Well, if, if you were going to apply for five, oh, one, C, three, status, that might be an issue, but that doesn't, that's not required that you do that. It merely says that you can't be a for-profit entity. Five, oh, one, C, three, status, uh, the IRS recognizes charitable and, and public benefit corporations, that's not necessary. And I agree that that could be problematic under federal law, but we're not asking for that.
Just a, a general question to the committee, Mr. Vice Mayor. Um, what, what, do other, do other cities have that?
I, I believe so, I think that, that's what we modeled ours off of.
As long as it's not Calaveras, that's all.
I can't argue for against it, it was in the recommendation from the committee and that's how it got in.
Okay.
We have another comment, please, help us.
I apologize, since this has come up, so if I could, can I put my two cents in?
Please.
Once the Compassionate Use Act and everything passed, um, because of obviously federal government, state government, um, back even from ninety-six, when the first dispensaries and storefronts happened, you had to file as a nonprofit. Um, we are not allowed to file any type of tax returns and things in the manner of a regular retail business or company. So with the new merging of AUMA and now Malkursa merging together, um, we are still allowed to license as a nonprofit all the way to the end of eighteen. Then, at the end of eighteen, beginning nineteen, they're still discussing legislation of having nonprofits then having to reapply and possibly at that time change to a LL, limited liability company. Um, and that is because of the federal government. That is because it's still, the scheduling's up and down. Um, in fact, um, he's a physician, we do have goodwill, actually, our cancer patients do not pay for their medications. That is actually donated and paid forward from other patients, so it's a very generous, compassionate act. So that is the way that the state and the government requires us to file. There's no other way right now. Next year, when things change on January one, other entities and in the cannabis industry would then file as a limited liability company or a company. That's where the new, all the new taxation comes into place. But actually storefronts dispensaries are continued for an additional year as a nonprofit status. Just to clarify, sorry.
Thank you for your clarification. All right. Anyone else?
All right.
All right.
Consider, you got it?
Yeah.
I move that the reading in full of the body of ordinance number four, thirty-nine, dash, two, zero, one, seven be waived and said ordinance being read and adopted by title only.
Second it.
Have a second? All in favor? Aye? Opposed?
I move adoption of ordinance number four, three, nine, dash, two, zero, one, seven, an ordinance of the city of weed revising and restating section eight point three, zero, of the weed municipal code regarding the regulation of location and operations of medical cannabis dispensaries.
Second it.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item B, ordinance of the city council, the city council of the city of weed relating to the permitting and licensing cannabis-related businesses. Council will consider first reading of ordinance number four, four, one, dash, two, zero, one, seven, allowing cannabis-related businesses to acquire a license to operate within the city limits.
Mayor, uh, this, uh, is a two-part, um, solution to a problem, you might say. One is we have to make sure that our municipal code is, is consistent. And we've had some things in the past, such as you can only get a business license if your, if your business doesn't violate federal law, which we have to deal with because we're now gonna do that. And the other part B of the, uh, solution is what I call the no pigs on Main Street stuff that we find some of our, in our older parts of the municipal code. We had one that prohibited certain kinds of activities, activities without a special permit, such as, uh, a circus, a sideshow, a dance hall, skating rink, bowling alley, amusement or recreation parlor, whatever that is, uh, and so, so forth. I think it used to say dog and pony show as well in here someplace. So I thought this is an opportunity to update that as well and, uh, and get away from the, um, the hazards, uh, that are, that were at least recognized back in nineteen sixty-two as, as being the downfall of the city, such as, uh, skating rinks. So, uh, this, this, uh, ordinance does that. It, uh, allows us to proceed with our, with our medical marijuana, uh, ordinance and be compatible with the rest of the code. And as I said, it also updates some old provisions.
May I have public comment?
Again, just to be clear, is this pertaining to moving from Main Street or not?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
So our ordinance said that we would never adopt something that violated federal law. But we're going to, so we're changing that ordinance.
Part of the ordinance.
Yes.
Good job.
That's it.
Seven, eight words, when I took a hundred and did my gosh. Okay, first reading?
Any other questions? All right.
Is there any place this location is?
No.
Is there any place else? 'Cause I didn't see that.
No, not right now. All right. I move that the reading in full of the body of ordinance number four, four, one, dash, two, zero, one, seven be waived and said ordinance being introduced for first reading by title only.
Second that.
Have a second? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carry.
Okay, I move introduction of ordinance number four, four, one, dash, two, zero, one, seven, an ordinance of the weed, an ordinance of the city council of the city of weed relating to the permitting and licensing of cannabis-related businesses.
Second it.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item C, Public Works Department, Sewer Division, council will consider introduction and adoption of resolution authorizing the filing of a financial assistance application. Do you have?
I do.
Thank you.
Again, on August tenth, uh, when, uh, council authorized the submission for the grant, they did that by minute order, and the state requires or require, or hopes to or requests that you actually do that by resolution. So this is a resolution to, uh, provide the, uh, authority to apply for that grant, rather than the minute order that you already did.
Does everybody understand that?
I do, but I have a question. This is not for the whole city of weed because of.
Please use your mic, please.
Um, can, can you guys hear me?
That's not.
TV.
Oh, I'm sorry, applaud, applaud those folks at home, thanks for watching. Is this for our entire city or just for North Weed, Vista? I believe it's not for the entire city, 'cause I see downtown weed and North Weed.
What?
This, this project is, is also gonna be, it's got White Avenue included on it, we got a sewer line right here by the post office, it's gonna be behind the Berean Church, it's, it's scattered around quite a bit, there is, there is no sewer work being done in Vista, on Vista. Um, the only, the only hangup was the same project we brought to you earlier with the diagrams on it, and we got approval, I submitted the paperwork with a minute order and they kicked it back and said I had to have resolution.
So next question, so the pictures we have here, I see East Lincoln, um, North Davis, Parks Way, all the ones that are red identified in the maps, that's where the, um, project is, is enhanced for, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay. Does everyone know that?
Yeah, I think we've got South Weed Elementary School down to the post, post office in, uh, Main Street, correct? Yes, did?
And, and over behind Rays, that's part of the CEQA that came up with behind Rays and where we had that problem over there, that's gonna be included in here.
Mr. Vice, I ask that because we're aware that our entire city needs to be fixed, but I just wanna make sure that we, that people know and that we know what areas are being, um, addressed, so there's no question.
These are our, our lines that are in the most need right now, and that's why we're jumping around everywhere instead of just doing one location.
Thanks, Craig. Thank you, Stacy.
Is this, is this our first reading?
We're gonna make a, we're asking for a resolution, that's all we need.
Oh, okay. Resolution is one, so we need this. This one?
Yes.
For resolution. I move that the reading in full of the body of resolution number two, one, dash, two, zero, one, seven, be waived, said resolution being introduced and adopted by title only.
I'll second it.
Have a second? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carry.
I move adoption of resolution number two, one, dash, two, zero, one, seven, a resolution of the city council of the city of weed authorizing the submission of a grant application.
I second it.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Look at us. Consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions on this consent agenda?
Uh, no, Mr. Vice Mayor, not myself.
Can I get a motion?
I so moved that it be approved, consent agenda be approved as, as listed.
I'll second it.
You have a second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, staff reports.
Yeah, just quickly for the fire department, we've flown the, the two positions for fire chief and assistant chief. They close October thirty-first, so we'll see what we get for candidates there. I'll be, I'll be getting our committee to put together for, start the interview and selection process. Also, our new engine's coming along nicely. I would expect for us to have it around mid-October. So as far as fires last month, well, we ran about, the total was seventy-two calls, I think, last month. And we had four fires. All of them were small, so that was a good thing. The bad thing is all of them were transient related. So that's kinda the sad part there.
May I ask a question? How, how long are you still here for?
Well, I'm trying to get finished as quickly as possible, but I would think probably somewhere in December.
Your contract says the end of the year, right?
Well, not, it says nine hundred and sixty hours. I can work nine sixty in twelve months and I probably, I don't know, around three hundred and twenty or something. So about a third of the way.
I'm keeping track, thank you, sir.
But then it all starts over on the first of January, so we could keep him another...
If we do the new contract, yeah.
If he applies.
Kelly?
Yeah, we're still working with the developers and on the housing thing we had mentioned before, the affordable housing. It's not government subsidized. It's duplex and fourplex.
Talking to my mic.
Is still moving, still moving forward. This is a good mic. It picks it up quite a ways. I speak loud anyway. Anyway, we, we're still working with that. Just talked to him today. That will stimulate some other activities in the same area with, with another group of people, it appears. But anyway, things are going well. And like I mentioned, Starbucks, it's gonna be open pretty darn quick. I forget what he said the date was on that.
September fifteenth.
Say it please loud.
That's tomorrow.
September fifteenth?
We better get in line right now.
They're trying, they're trying to, they're... I, I, because I know they had to change the dates because of the, the, the big shots with Starbucks are gonna be up here. But I guess Wednesday from five to seven, there's gonna be free drinks. And I ask him what kind of drinks and...
Decaf at nine.
So, I'm sorry, what are the dates again? There was two different conversations. What are the dates that we, we know or, or, or can look at or the public is looking for? I have another question after that. But what, what are the dates that we, as a city, know?
Wednesday, I know. He said the free drinks from five to seven, that came from our, our building inspector.
So that's probably a soft opening.
I know they're really close within just a couple days. You know, I think they were shooting for tomorrow, but I don't think they're gonna make that, but it's close.
It's amazing.
It did go fast.
If there's ribbon cutting, I'd like to be a part of it. I'm just...
I, I'm not sure.
That's usually a chamber of commerce.
Yeah, I, I, right, I think it should be both. So, okay, Wednesday the twenty-seventh, right?
She said the nineteenth, and I like her, she knows it.
Because that's what they're, they're calling services set up and they're all using the nineteenth. Those services that take the trash and water and store, that's all getting and starting on the nineteenth.
There we go.
So that makes sense that the eighteenth would be like a soft opening.
Can we just find out so we know?
He's gonna be out there seven, about seven tomorrow morning to do some, help them with some inspections. Move along, but he, he will know for sure.
Maybe he can send us an email.
Yeah, send an email. We, we don't know as a city official when things happen, as I know. We should know when people ask me, is open, I, I like to give them an answer. So we can just find out what date it is, just communicate us by email.
They should let us know.
So I, I saw you write that down. Thank you, sir.
I have nothing to report.
Ron asked me to let you know that the reimbursement check for nuisance. So I was able to close escrow.
Good.
Oh, did it close escrow?
That's how we got the money.
Ah, nice, that's right.
They dispersed the money back, reimbursed us, then closed that escrow.
Yep, good, cool.
Lastly, I think most of you have, have heard that we have our K-9 in service now. He's on patrol. He's gone through his training for protection, search and for narcotics enforcement. So we're looking forward to being able to have him out here. I, I was gonna try and get him to the meeting tonight, but we'll shoot for next, next meeting.
He's the new guy, so he has work weekends.
What's, and his name?
Drax, D-R-A-X, Drax.
And he is vocal. He is a vocal K-9.
I, I have a question, Mr. Um, when we did the Silva's abatement, we also had the other nuisance abatement up on South Weed.
Right.
And they have cleaned. But I have not seen any activity for several weeks. Do you know anything?
The Veterans Administration hired a person to come in and clean to the point that he did. And I think he got tired. It was pretty bad.
Yeah.
But he still has stuff there. And so we'll keep on top of him.
And it's mostly all outside that he's done, nothing inside yet. So, but it's still under the Veterans Administration.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
We also probably, I think it's next week, they will be working on the house on Crestmore for cleanup as well. We've received a bid and hired Tim Louie to come in and clean that up.
Thank you. So there's a Lowell meeting coming up in October. I need to know if you're attending any meal choices. If I need to get those in by October fourth.
Have my. Yeah, you're coming?
What's the date, do we know?
October eighteen. Okay, Bob?
Last date right before the council meeting. I know it is, it always is.
Yeah. You're right. Eleventh. So I'm waiting. Bob? No, and you have a report?
Mr. I do have a question. I know Facebook, social media, people are just jamming up about Panda Express because they know I love it. But there's going out that we're getting it in South Weed, Lowe's. Can you have any, any updates we can say? And they said today, yesterday Wendy's. I'm like, oh my gosh, I haven't heard any of this. Can, can you speak to any of those? Our finance person or our vice mayor?
We get the word out, we get the word out. We go through the EDC also. And there's, you know, people come, you know, these companies come unbeknownst to us many times. They, they observe what's going on. And we find out and we pursue them naturally. But yeah, I, I agree. I'd like to see Panda Express out there.
And Wendy's.
You still haven't given the answer. I don't, I don't put presidents to social media, but when they ask, I'm like, ooh, I wanna tell them just, no, stop saying it every month, every week. If it comes.
Maybe Panda Express can see it.
Throw out these suggestions also with, with, you know, it's public knowledge and love. And we, we're trying to encourage them to lean our way when it comes to things.
That's a good business answer. That's good.
Sue?
Oh, I'd love to, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second it.
All in favor? Aye, opposed? Carry. Thank you all for coming. Council, thanks for getting us through this thing without our leaders. It was pretty...
We did it.